I can buy a little time.
Right here. Adjust the hotline between two A one and two B, these two.
Okay.
Parcel A is not to be considered a separate building lot.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the planning board meeting of March fourteenth, two thousand thirteen. My name is John Heikel. I'll be chairing the meeting this evening. If you don't mind, we can go around the table and introduce our members.
Simone Dehamel, alternate.
Richard Meany.
Mark Warden.
I'm sorry, Gail.
That's okay. Gail Abrek, recording secretary.
Mark Warden.
I'm Brian Rose. I'm the planning and zoning administrator.
All right. Thank you. Let's see. We've got an issue here or we have something to do with the minutes. We want to, the minutes that were taken on February twenty eighth. I reviewed them. We've all reviewed them, I assume. Can I get a motion to accept?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay. That's a motion by Richard Meany, second by Simone. Brian, would you like to say something on the plan?
Do you want to do a vote on the motion?
Oh, the vote on the motion. How's that? Yeah, sorry about that.
We're voting on the minutes.
Just figured, yes.
From Mark, February twenty eighth.
Okay. All in favor of approval, approving the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any extensions?
I'm an extension.
And don't forget to turn your phones back on at the end of the meeting.
No, I thought we had to turn them off.
Let's see.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would you like Simone to be a voting member tonight?
I would like Simone to be a voting member tonight, yes. If she has no problem with that.
Nope.
Okay.
Good.
We'll get the, get the woman's perspective tonight and things will be done right.
You mentioned that.
Right.
I'm close to the chair.
Hey. Okay. Brian, would you like to say something on the plan Purnardville, community master plan, and smart code?
Okay, so I put out on your, on your table a flyer, looks like this. It's called Plan Purnardville, Community Smart Plan, uh, Community Master Plan and Smart Code. And this is our flyer for our Purnardville planning project that we've been working on getting together. And we've got this, we've got this flyer that we're going to be mailing out to everybody in Purnardville. We're also going to be handing them out to businesses and putting up posters in their windows. And we've got a pretty good organized outreach effort to get as many, many people out as possible to this. But I just do want to go over some of the dates on here so that people who are watching on TV can, can know when they are. We've got an opening presentation that's to be done by our consultants on Friday, May third, at six o'clock to eight thirty. And this is at the Gothstown Square, at the Gothstown Harvest Christian Church Meeting Hall. They've graciously agreed to lend us their space and we're great, we're very grateful to them to, to have offered that to us, so. And then we also have at the Gothstown Square, a studio location where our consultants will be for four days during this whole Planapalooza project. And so they're going to be there Friday, well, Saturday morning, starting at the studio after the, after the initial presentation, all the way through Tuesday evening when they do their final presentation. So then the, the second event of interest would be the interim pinup, which would be Sunday, May fifth. And that'll be done in the studio from six o'clock to eight thirty. And then finally, the closing presentation would be at the Gothstown Harvest Christian Church again. And that's from five thirty to seven thirty on Tuesday evening, the seventh of May. Now, the interim, the interim pinup, I said was going to be at the studio. The studio location is also going to be in Gothstown Square, where the Gothstown Harvest Christian Church is. But it's going to be at the Bank of America space. And so we've got two, two spaces in that same plaza, which would be very convenient for, you know, people to know where the project is, number one. But then also for our consultants to be able to move back and forth between the spaces when they're doing their presentation or going to their studio. It just worked out really well and we're grateful. We actually have representatives, because the church is here tonight on an application basis, they're here and, you know, I, I am very grateful to them and I, I hope that can go out to all the people in the town. But we're really, really excited. This Planapalooza is basically a chance for all the people in town to come out and give their input on what the plan and the smart code can end up being for Purnardville, what the future is going to be for Purnardville. And, you know, these will end up shaping the future of Purnardville for a long time. And so I, I hope everyone that's listening and gets a hold of this flyer or hears about it will come out and participate. We have set up a Facebook page. It's www.facebook.com/planpurnardville. And I just hope, you know, we can get as much support on this as possible. So, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, Brian. Richard?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Brian, this is on a postal card, so is everybody in Gothstown going to get one of these pretty soon?
Um, well, I printed six thousand of them, but I don't have enough to mail to everyone in Gothstown. So I think the focus for the mailing will be into Purnardville areas. And then, you know, we'll try to make sure that businesses in, in the rest of Gothstown will get them on their counters. Town Hall will have them, of course. There are places like the library and, you know, the rec center and, and things like that will try to get them on all the counters where people can have, have them available, so.
And they can, they, it seems that they can click through the town website to see the information, too.
Yep. And, and we, we're also going to try to get as many of the businesses who have LED signs to put up a little thing on their LED sign or, you know, wherever we can put up the information, we'll, we'll try to do it, so.
Sounds great. Great project, great initiative for Purnardville. Thank you, Brian.
Yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda, correspondence and action items. Would like, first on the list this evening is map eighteen, lot forty. Waiver of site plan request for proposal to expand and increase the Gothstown Harvest Christian Church's unit to expand into other vacant space currently within the Gothstown Square Building. High Point Properties LLC owner and Gothstown Harvest Christian Church applicant. That's five forty-two Mast Road, zoned commercial. Brian, could you give us a summary on this project?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes.
I'm sorry, could I recuse myself from this because I'm part of the church?
You certainly can, and we have a quorum, so thank you very much.
Yep.
Sit in the audience when you recuse yourself, I think. You're with the common folks. Thanks. Okay. So, the Gothstown Harvest Christian Church, they are at Gothstown Square, as we just mentioned. And they currently have the corner space in that, in, one of the corners in space in that plaza. And they're looking to expand back to the back. They, they, they have the space on the right-hand side of the plaza in the front, and they want to go further back into the space where CMC medical offices used to be. They actually did occupy a, a portion of that space previously, and CMC then came in and used it for a while. Now they want to expand back into that, plus a little bit, another unit worth of space. So, the proposed total square footage of the church would expand up to about eighty-five hundred square feet, as per their conceptual layout plan that they gave to us. And based on an expansion of this nature, a site plan typically would be required. And so, because, because they would essentially be changing the use from like a medical office building, which has a lower parking requirement than what a church use would have if it were to use the same amount of space. So, because of the, the need for additional parking, I guess, based on the additional square footage of a church, they're required to do a site plan. Now, this is a request to waive that requirement based on the, just the, the existing church. They have always been able to work fine within the space that they have. And also the fact that they're not expanding the space for the, the meeting hall, it's really for the, to make bigger youth areas. They're, they're keeping about the same amount of office space, they're just shifting it from one side to the other. And then, park, because I said the parking requirement goes up, that's why they're here. But in looking at it, it seems to be like, I, I know the planning board has looked at parking in the past for different churches and has waived parking as a requirement in certain instances. So, you know, right now, there's a hundred and fourteen parking stalls in that plaza. Most of them on a Sunday wouldn't be used by businesses. There may be one or two businesses that might be open on a Sunday, but for the most part, those hundred and fourteen would be available. With the expansion, you know, the requirement in our ordinance requires a hundred and fifty-seven, according to my rough calculations, based on their square footage. So, it would be a waiver of approximately forty-three, forty-three stalls. Is that right? Yeah, forty-three stalls. So, my, my recommendation is to, to grant a waiver. And, you know, I, I firmly believe that this would not have a negative impact on the, the plaza. It seems to me like their use has been pretty steady over the past several years, and they haven't caused any parking problems thus far. So, you know, I would recommend that we grant the waiver. And I wrote in here that we, we base, we give it a condition that, you know, if parking should become an issue in the future, that the planning board reserves the right to revisit this issue and, and possibly require a site plan or off-site parking requirements or, or some other thing. So, and then the other condition I put on there was that they would need to comply with all building and fire code requirements for whatever expansion work they're doing, so.
Good. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the committee? Representative, can I just make a point? Representative, Representative, so Leclan Devanza came in to the meeting after the roll call, so I just wanted to announce that he is here.
But I was here to vote on the minutes.
And he was here to vote on the minutes. But I just wanted to let, for the record, that he is here in attendance.
Okay. I just have a question. On the application for waiver of site plan that's been submitted, it's dated three-sixth thirteen. It's not completely filled out. There's two signatures at the bottom. One is an applicant and one is a property owner's signature. And I know that this is a tenant, and I know this is, there's a property owner. I mean, I'm familiar with the area and I do know who Mike Spredakis is. But when I look at the signatures, I have no clue what the, from the way these, these signatures are on here. I can't, I can't read them, and the application is not completely filled out, so it's, that's... And I'm not con, you know, I, I, I just have a little difficulty when I look at an application that's incomplete. And then when I look at the signatures at the bottom, I can't read the signatures to tell you a first name, last name, middle initial or anything.
So would you prefer we have them printed as well as?
No, 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 no. That's not, that's not my issue. I understand, and I deal with a lot of signatures that you can't read. I understand that. But my point is, I have an incomplete application. There are four questions that are on here. Some pertain to the property owner, some pertain to a tenant or vice versa, some of them, perhaps both. Some of them may not be applicable to the prop, to a tenant, but would be applicable to a property owner. But they're not marked off yes or no. I mean, so it looks like, to me, it looks like it's incomplete. Is there a reason?
Yeah. I apologize, I don't, I don't actually have the packet of the application.
No, right here.
Can I see which ones are?
Well, here on the bottom, all those questions. I mean, there's a question on there which I think is applicable, which is, is the site plan, they're asking for a waiver of a site plan. And there's a question that's on there that says, is the site plan that's being presented, does it meet the requirements? Yes or no? It's not marked off. So if you're asking for a waiver of a site plan, I would at least like to know that the site plan you're asking for a waiver, does it conform to our regulations or is it nonconform? And I think it's a legitimate question.
Yeah. I, I mean, I can answer it based on one regulation that I, that I know of, and that's the parking regulation. I, I know that they exceed the parking regulation for where they're at. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's kind of tough to meet those regulations with, with an assembly hall as the size that they have.
Well, I, I understand, and I, I don't, I don't think to myself that the parking is the question that I have, because the parking is an issue that we're going to be dealing with and going to be discussing. But everything else as far as the, the site plan, I mean, we have another applicant that we, we looked at, that we discussed last week, at our last meeting at a public hearing, and a question came up that everything that's on the site plan, what we have in front of us, or the site plan that was approved, is it really what's at the location? So here we have an applicant coming in with a site plan, that the site plan that's drawn in front of us is not the same site plan when you go to the location of the property. So I guess my question is, the site plan that I'm looking to waive for a waiver, what is on paper with that site plan, if I go to that and I look at the site plan, am I going to find what's on the piece of paper?
You should, yeah.
I, I understand, but the property owner has it marked off that it is or it isn't, so I guess that's why I, I...
Yeah. All right. I'm sorry, I, that was, that should have been something I had them do before they turned it in.
I, I did have a question on that also, and I just wanted to, the sentence here that says, "I certify that my business and site is developed in accordance with a non-residential site plan," and those four questions are under that. So, somebody certifying that those four, that somebody, it says, "I certify." So, I, I kind of have to agree with Phil on this. It's not a difficult one to approve this plan, but I think it's an incomplete application. I hate to say that, but...
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
I think...
I'm not sure who, that if he doesn't know, would all, every single ordinance, or every single line of the non-residential site plan regulations, or ordinance, maybe he's not comfortable with checking one or the other. And I'm not sure it's clear the applicant is supposed to certify that. Maybe it's the Gothstown Planning Board that certifies it. But does, they did check, is there a currently approved site plan for this property? They checked no. And I don't, is, the site plan's not going to play, the site plan is not going to change, right? Because the exterior walls of the building and parking lot are not changing. We have an interior floor plan, but the site plan, which shows parking, trees, building, layout, that's not changing at all, right?
No. The exterior's not changing, and there is a site plan on this property.
Yeah.
And really, it's about parking, and parking is an issue, parking is not an issue.
Oh.
That you can see.
Parking is the issue before you, pretty much.
Parking is the issue before us.
Despite whether or not to waive the parking requirement.
And Sunday morning, in your opinion, we haven't heard from Tyre Warehouse, because I believe they're probably the only one open on Sunday morning. Maybe, or, I think, or maybe two friends also.
I think they've begun to be open on Sundays now. I, I think I've seen that sign on their building.
So there shouldn't be any kind of a burden to any other tenant?
That's, that's what the board is to decide tonight. In my opinion, I think this is a waiver that could be granted, especially based on the fact that there's a Shaz Plaza right across the street where there is a need for some overflow parking. No, that parking lot could be utilized.
Okay. Thank you. Mark?
So are you looking for a motion, and we have here from the public, if they're here to speak about it? Is that how?
Well, kind of discuss this with us, and then I'm going to ask the, if there's any public, I mean, if there's any, from the applicant, any comments from the applicant that he'd like to...
Well, at least to move the discussion forward, I'll move that we accept the application for waiver of site plan and waiver of parking regulations.
Question?
So your motion is saying that we find that it's complete? It's a complete application?
I am moving that we accept the application for waiver of site plan.
Even though it's not complete?
That's not what I said. My motion is to accept it as presented tonight.
No second?
We have a motion from Mark to accept the application as submitted, seconded by Richard Meany.
Can I speak to my second?
You should speak to your second, yes.
I, the, the motion is to determine that the application does not have a regional impact and accept the application for review. The reason I consider this application to be complete is that when you sign your name to say, "I certify that my business and site is developed in accordance with the non-residential site plan," essentially with that one statement, you're certifying yes to all these checkboxes. I don't think we should penalize an applicant for a poorly developed form. Because when you say, "I certify," you're saying yes to everything down below. If you fail to check off yes on will a new sign be displayed, that doesn't change the completeness of your application. It's, it's a, it's a rule in the zoning ordinance that if you need a sign, you go get a sign permit. So, the certification line above those three questions, in my opinion, is attesting to the applicant's completeness of this application.
Even though it's not marked off, yes or no?
Correct. Because the, the statement above, yes and no, basically says, "I did all my, I did all my work, and I'm telling you, I've got everything in line, ready, ready for approval." This form, in my opinion, needs some improvement. The improvement that Brian determined from your suggestion of having the property owner's signature, applicant's signature, signature and planning board's signature attested to with a printed name is just one simple improvement that we should see. But it isn't clear that you have to check these once you get to the statement that says, "I certify that we're in accordance with this site plan," in my opinion. That's why I consider it complete.
Okay. Can I just, can I just point one thing out?
Certainly, of course.
When you get to that, what you're saying is a sentence?
Mm-hmm.
At the end of, it's, "I certify that my business and site is developed in accordance with the non-residential site plan." There is no period, there is no colon, there's no semicolon. And then it goes on, "regulations and zoning ordinance." So with the non-residential site plan, regulations and zoning ordinance, yes or no, colon, yes or no, is the continuation of what's up above. If you look at every other line that's up there, it ends with a period or a colon. So that second portion is the continuation of that incomplete sentence on the top. So the way, the way it reads is, "I certify that my business and site is developed in accordance with the non-residential site plan, regulations and zoning ordinance, colon, yes, colon, line for you to check off, no, colon. It's one or the other. And if it's not checked off, you have not certified that it is, and you're not certifying that it isn't, you're leaving it blank, you're not addressing the issue."
Do we have an official document called non-residential site plan regulations?
That's their development regulations.
Okay, so we don't. So someone arbitrarily created a...
No, it used to be called that, and I think that because this is an old form, that's, it's still being called that on the old form.
So why should we penalize an applicant? Because our form is not user-friendly. I don't think we should. That's my point.
And if the applicant is only doing some interior space, he can't certify whether the site plan is accurate or not. He doesn't own the building or the, or the lot, or the property. He's leasing eight thousand square feet.
But the app, application is signed by both the property owner and the tenant. That's my point.
So, for, for lack of a good form, I don't think we should penalize the applicant and the people that the applicant has brought tonight. So we go forth.
Well, can I just make one suggestion, then? Now, let's just make it for the record that we are not accepting, we don't know that this is an approved site plan.
We don't know that.
So, but I think the record should at least address that, because it's in the application. If we're accepting an application as complete and that's not addressed, then I, I don't have a problem accepting this. But making a notation in the minutes with the acceptance that we don't know if it's assertive, and if it meets those requirements, because we don't know.
What I, what I did notice in the staff recommendation is that, because usually we have the language, "accept the application as complete and ready for review." And the word "complete" was not in the staff recommendations, nor was it in the motion, which is different.
Right. And I think that that's a very good point, because usually it is.
Correct.
So as this goes forward, okay, and let's say six months, a year from now, something goes forward, somebody's going to look, pull out the records and say, "Oh, yeah, they went before the planning board on March, March fourteenth, and everything was approved." So at that point in time, everybody's going to assume that everything was complete, everything was, and it's not. So that's why I think it should be pointed out.
Yeah. If I can just make a comment on the form itself and the, the quality of the question. I think it's a bit of an unfair question to ask, especially when it's a project, it's a property that needs a waiver from the regulations to begin with. The answer could never be yes. So it would always have to be no. If it needs a waiver on a, on a, on an application for a waiver site plan, there's always going to be a development regulation that they won't meet. And so, I just, to me, I feel like it's, it's a question that maybe shouldn't be on there.
Well, I, I think, what do you think about a suggestion here? Two, two questions. Now, I'm chairing this tonight, but I probably won't be chairing this again.
Any luck, right, John?
Any luck?
So, you know, we've got a, we've got a, and we've got, we've got probably the most
business-friendly planning board sitting here right now that we've ever had in this town. And that believes in less bureaucracy and more abilities for businesses to thrive and prosper. Would it be out of line if, let's say, we either, A, took a minute and allowed the applicant to check off four boxes and submit it and just...
So, you know, we've got a, we've got a, and we've got, we've got probably the most business-friendly planning board sitting here right now that we've ever had in this town. And that believes in less bureaucracy and more abilities for businesses to thrive and prosper. Would it be out of line if, let's say, we either A, took a minute and allowed the applicant to check off four boxes, and submit it, and just, and suspend the rules, let's say, for one minute? And, and then that would end all of this. We'd end all of what government seems to do too much of anyway. Yes.
I, I understand, and I, I tend to agree with you, as long as both the applicant and the property owner here, and I don't think we have to.
Yeah, Mike's time.
I mean, I don't have a problem going forward, if, if something on this, if there's a, a, in the motion, there's something in there just to acknowledge that we don't know that if it, if it meets those, we don't know.
Right, I'm, I'm with Phil, we, we can go on, and I don't know, Brian, you need our go-ahead to make this form less bad? You know, do you need a motion for that, or whatever, I've got any motion you need, but this, this.
You wanna make a motion, I'll go ahead and change the form.
There we go.
But there's a motion on the table.
Yeah, there's a motion already on the table.
Did you suggest I amend my motion to say that we acknowledge that some of these are not filled out?
Exactly.
Is that kinda what you had, yeah? All right, I'd like to restate my motion.
Great.
Okay. That we accept this application for waiver of site plan as presented with full knowledge that the last three items on the waiver form have not been checked.
And I'll maintain my second.
Motion amended by Mark and seconded by Richard.
And I have no further discussion.
Okay. We can vote on that now?
Well, do we, before we vote, do we wanna hear from them, I don't know?
We, we have to, we have to.
I think we have to call the motion, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so let's call the motion, let's take a vote on this.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, four to nothing. Wonderful. How about, now, let's hear from the, if, if the applicant would like, do we have any presentation from the applicant this evening?
No.
If you'd like to, yeah.
I just wanted, yeah, all we're doing is, the sanctuary is basically staying the same. This thing that happened in Connecticut with the kids. Okay, thank you.
With the tragedy in Connecticut, we, we were lacking as in facilities anyway, with the kids and the youth, and. This really bothered me.
I'm sorry, excuse me, sir, for the record, could you state your name?
Oh yeah, Joseph Johnson, I'm the senior pastor of Gofftown Harvest Christian Church. And the reason for what we're doing is, is with the tragedy in Connecticut, we were looking at our facilities, and we were challenged anyway, we gave up some space. Mike had asked us to move some things around, as you know, we have some property up on one fourteen, and we were trying to accommodate that, and with things just not working out, we've been in limbo for about four, four and a half years. But this tragedy really hit, and I saw that we really weren't doing our best when it came to children and youth. So we looked at it, we talked to Mike, and again, the sanctuary, the same units, we're keeping the sanctuary, but our expanse, we're expanding, and we're really pouring a lot of money to develop children and youth space. So as far as the membership of our church, the sanctuary itself is, we're cleaning it up, make no mistake, putting some carpet in and stuff like that, but this expansion is to deal with children and youth. Now, as far, and as far as parking, we've been in the facilities now about fifteen years, and in fifteen years, there was one time that we had, we were, were challenged parking, and that was a funeral for a woman that was a very well-known schoolteacher and things like that. And now you brought up Tyre Warehouse, Tyre Warehouse has already said, I, I went to them, I talked to Brian as far as, and he said, hey, you might wanna check and see if anybody's gonna have some problems. And they instantly went, no problem, you guys have never affected us, we're here to help and stuff. So that's what we're doing, that's why we're doing it, we've never had a problem with parking, and, and hopefully this can get through, because we just wanna serve folks, and there's no question, we wanna get going, so if we can.
Right.
That's it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any questions to the, for the applicant? From the board, no? Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you for your time.
All right, well. Any motions?
Do we have to do a public hearing?
No, there's no public hearing on this.
Yeah, there's no public hearing on this.
It's a waiver request.
We have to vote on the request for the waiver.
So.
Okay, I make a motion to waive the site plan requirement and accompany parking requirement subject to the conditions printed in four A and B in our staff recommendations.
Have we had a second for that?
Second.
Mark Warden, seconds, Richard Meany makes the motion. Mark, we'd like to speak to your second. Richard, we'd like to speak to your motion, okay. Everybody understands the, the motion? Let's vote on that, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay, abstains, unanimous, four to nothing. Great, good luck, thank you very much, too.
Come on back.
Yes, come on back, yes.
Why do you think?
Unrefused?
Yes.
Okay. We have some old business here. Map fifteen, lot one fifty-five, fifty-seven, and one sixty. A final subdivision in site plan review hearing for proposed lot line adjustment between lots one fifty-seven and one sixty. And a proposal to build a one thousand ninety-two square foot deck for additional outdoor seating for the North Garden Restaurant on lot one fifty-five. Also included in this proposal is to add a new additional parking lot area on lot one fifty-seven. The properties are owned by North Garden Realty Trust and seven fifteen, at seven fifteen Mast Road, and seven fifteen Mast Road LLC, and are located at seven fifteen and seven seventeen Mast Road and twenty-five Laurier Street, zoned commercial, and it was continued from February fourteenth meeting. Brian, would you like to speak, give a summary for this one?
Yes. So since a month ago, when the, the applicant was here, they did go back and revisit their site plan. They, and they did address most of the comments that, at least from my standpoint, from the planning standpoint, they, they addressed pretty much everything. And then there were a few outstanding comments that engineering still had, and those are listed in the, in the, in the report. And what I've done is translated those into approval conditions that would be recommendate, under the recommendation for both the, the lot line adjustment and also for the, for the site plan. They do need a conditional use permit for the parking waiver, that's, that's just part of the request, and that's how the planning board would grant the waiver of the parking. So my recommendation on this project would be to approve the lot line adjustment, subject to ten conditions. And then approve the conditional use permit for the sixty-one stalls where ninety-one are required, with the, with the normal conditional use permit findings, A through F, in your report. And then approve the site plan with the conditions listed, one through ten. Most all of those are standard conditions of approval that we would see on any site plan. I did add a few at the end regarding some conditions that the fire department had wanted, for them to include some additional bollards than what are shown on there, in order to make it safer. And then also add some either curbing or wheel stops to the three parking stalls that are to the right, or to, I'm sorry, to the left of the deck, and make sure that there's enough available clear space for a walkway to go in front of those stalls, so that the cars don't end up blocking an egress for that, for that entrance exit. So those are the approval conditions that I've, I've listed. And then also, the, the conditions eleven through twenty are the, the comments from Megan regarding the site plan and the drainage study. So with that, I'll turn it back to the chair, the planning, the public hearing is still open, it was continued from the last, last two meetings ago, so.
Okay. Thank you very much, Brian. Any comments from the, from the board here, do we have any questions?
I just have a question, and I'm sure the applicant can probably point it out on, on there. But number eight, paint a crosswalk at the driveway entrance, are you talking about the existing driveway entrance?
Yes.
I think, do you mean like across the mountain?
Right there, yeah.
Isn't there a sidewalk there already?
Well, it's, I'm talking about the, and the sidewalk location, just to, as a, as a, an indicator to people that there, there's a crossing for vehicles there. And that they should stop before cross, just walking straight across.
Well, I, I kinda, guess I kinda understand what you're talking about, but I'm not familiar with them being any place, and the only concern I have, if there's gonna be something to be painted and a requirement of the applicant, does that mean that the applicant has to maintain that? And I guess the concern that I have is that if that thing starts to fade and there's an accident out there, and somebody gets hit by a vehicle, is it gonna be because the applicant, because the applicant? You know, I, I just, I just see it as slippery slope.
It's, well, I, I'll say this, it's not a big deal if we wanna take that condition off, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Question?
Yes, Mark.
Brian, I have a question on these recommendations from the fire department regarding bollards and, let's see, what else, the?
The curbing.
The curbing, are those required under ordinance, or are those just sort of suggestions and best practice?
He had gave me, I had asked this question of him, and he gave me some different options. He did say that it is required that they provide some type of stop for vehicles to make sure that that egress is, is clear, for people to get in and out of there. So there's, you can see there on the site plan, if you look at the site plan, there's a, there's a, there's a sidewalk that, you know, it kinda comes right in front of those parking spaces, but the parking spaces butt right up to it.
I guess in the follow-up is to know if the applicant is fine with it, great, but if they are gonna contest it because of the added expense, and I don't wanna force them to do it unless it's already required by ordinance.
By fire, by fire code is where he's calling it from.
If I can add to that, I think some of those things that you're talking about, about the wheel stops and sometimes those bollards on there, also, a lot of times are requirements by insurance carrier. So some of these issues that we deal, that you're talking about here that deal with the fire codes, because a lot of times when a property is inspected for the purpose of property insurance, they see these things, and those are things that sometimes they do require.
That's great, that's a private agreement between the restaurant and the insurance company.
No, I understand, but the point that I'm trying to make is that they're aware of what the fire codes are, and that's part of the reason why it is, and I think it's probably, on something like this where it's, you're talking about life safety, it's probably a benefit both to the public and a benefit prob, to the, for the property owner.
That's fine, I just don't wanna impose any more restrictions than every other business in town has, and if every business has done it, and they're the only one that hasn't, but maybe the engineer can explain, you know, the, the applicant's position on this.
He's talking about these three spaces and.
Excuse me, let me just say one thing, we all sat on the, on the board here, and we discussed this through, and we're ready to hear from.
You want an overall, though, or are we, we all, we all just from last?
I missed the last meeting. Quick over, it'd be great, thank you.
This application does two things, it does a lot line adjustment and a site plan, there's three properties, this is the Mast Road, this is the North Garden Restaurant, with parking, they also own the adjacent lot that has a two-unit rental with parking, and then they just purchased this lot, which fronts on Laurier Street, with a single-family home, and it comes back to this, comes back to their parking lot. The first, first part of the application is to move this line towards Laurier Street, so that it's a smaller residential lot, and this back portion now is attached to this lot that has some of the parking and the, the two-unit rental. And the second part of the application is to proposing building an outdoor deck for seasonal use attached to the lounge, and putting new parking spaces on this portion that just, that was part of the residential lot, that is now part, would be part of this lot. So that's, that's the overall.
Okay.
Most of the comments from the last meeting, well, a lot of the comments from the last, from the first review pertain to the two thousand and three approval of the lounge, where some of the islands hadn't been constructed the way they should've, so we've addressed that, and that was a lot of the initial comments. The three spaces that the fire department's talking about are these three right here. When you come out of the building, out of the lounge, you come to a landing, and you go left down a handicap ramp and right downstairs, and they're just concerned that these three spaces are, can be, the cars may get jammed up and, and prevent the flow down those stairs. And the spaces, we need to move them back a couple of feet, and they're talking about curb stops on these three, you know, curb stops are a pain, but, you know, if it's, it makes me feel better, and it prevents cars from getting up against the wall there, I guess we could, you know. The bollards, as you drive by the deck, this is, this deck's gonna be, you know, five feet off the ground with people on it, the concern was people driving by might get too close and, and clip the deck. So we did show bollards, but they're about fifteen feet apart, and he's just asking for some closer space, which makes sense, because a car can squeeze in there. So that's, those are, those, that addresses those comments from the fire department, they're not, they're not, you know, crazy suggestions or requirements, but, you know, it's something we can do if, if we have to. I guess that's the reasoning for.
Go ahead, Richard.
What, what distance apart, because right now they're fifteen feet, what distance apart do you think's appropriate?
Maybe another one in between each of them, you know, seven feet apart, yeah, because the cars, you know, assuming the car comes at an angle, they're gonna clip, seven feet apart, they're gonna clip. It'd be one, two, three, four more bollards, you know, another fifty bucks a piece or whatever, I don't, it's all money, but it, you, you don't want the deck hit and they collapse and people fall in the parking lot, so.
Yeah, I had asked that question of Bill Connor as well, and I think he had said something like, anywhere between four to six feet might be better.
If we, if we split the distance, it would be seven feet.
Some vehicles could still fit within that, if it's a seven.
Yeah, to go straight in, maybe, but if the flow's, you know, parallel to it, so I, I think it's gonna be a little tough to, you're gonna have to really make an effort to.
Yeah.
To make a U-turn and hit straight into the deck, so we'll add bollards, you know, it'd love to make everybody happy.
Those wheel stops you're talking about, that protect the building?
On these three, yeah.
Is that a fire, is that a fire code issue, or is that?
There's a requirement for them to be at least six feet from.
Blocking the exit?
Yeah.
No, this is to protect the building?
You have to have a six-foot distance between, for people that address out of that.
Keeping the cars six feet from the building, and in this particular case, it's the exit down the stairs.
I understand.
It's a twofold.
So the, the stop will be running perpendicular to the building?
Uh, parallel to the building, so the, the car can't go beyond them.
And hit somebody coming down the stairs?
Right.
Okay, got it, all right. That's a reasonable safety issue. And how many extra parking lots in that stack lot?
Uh, there's twenty-four spaces back here, where we are losing four, five for the deck, but we're, we're tripling that back there. We can talk quickly about the waiver, the original approval of the lounge and restaurant, the site plan was granted a waiver at that time, I think seventy-seven was required, and they were given a waiver for forty-three, which is a, which is fifty-five percent of what was required, and it's been an operation. And it's been an operation for ten years, and there has been no parking issues. So with the additional seats, the requirements bump up to ninety-one spaces, and we're providing sixty-one. So we're providing two-thirds. So we're increasing by ten percent what's required. And keep in mind, the deck is seasonal, so if we leave it inside of the year, there will be no people there. So we're actually adding, we're almost coming up to what's required for the lounge and restaurant. So really, the parking, the waiver, I think, is well warranted, and we've talked...
Are you saying that there's only four months of the year that they would be using it, or?
Well, May, June, July, part of May, June, July, August, and part of September. So, you know, it's four months, and if it rains, they're not out there, so, you know, we're not, I'm not going to give dates, but obviously, if it's forty degrees, you know, they're not going to have tables of people serving out there.
That's where they'll smoke in the wintertime.
They may go stand out there, sure.
I'd just say be careful on what you say, because somebody will come and say, oh, he said this in a public meeting, and if, so they'll hold you to it. That's all I'm saying.
I'd leave it open all the way.
I am leaving it open. I'm saying it's probably...
If it was mine, I'd leave it open all the way.
Probably going to be about four months, just because of the weather.
Right.
And probably another two, three weeks within those four months, you're going to get rain some night, people won't be out there. So we just don't see an issue with parking. That's what we deal with.
Okay.
As far as the drainage, we've, since we got that report, we've talked to Megan, even though she's in vacation, and really, the only issue was the size of the drainage pipe and some stone around it. We were working with her on that, and we've basically, we've upgraded the pipe a little bit. We dug a test pit to confirm it's very porous soil and good drainage, so we've essentially addressed her comments on that, although we haven't, she hasn't seen the changes.
Is there anything that has been asked of you to do here that is unfair, unnecessary, an undue burden or something? Or is there anything that you'd like us to look at?
No. You know, the original site plan showed these islands, they didn't get built. It's been ten years, and now we're, you know, we've basically been asked to put them in, which, you know, they should have been put in ten years ago, so, but...
So you're okay with that?
Well, traffic flow and snow plowing was a lot easier without islands.
Oh, yes, I'm sure it is.
But it is what it is.
Where are you going to put all the snow now, with the bigger parking lot?
Well, there's, you know, there's more grassier areas, so we can pile it there, down along the edges, and when it gets full, the snow will be removed, like every other, every other business, unfortunately, in New England that has to deal with snow issues.
Phil?
Just a comment that the conservation commission was concerned about that drainage in the back, but it's being addressed.
Correct.
So, I mean, that was just a point, as far as the conservation commission's concerns, they are being addressed.
Okay. Richard?
There's one comment on here. It says some of the existing fence along the north and west lot lines of Lot 155 appears to be over the property line. Is that being relocated?
No.
Okay. And is that the lot that the owners also own?
I think they're talking about over in this area, possibly. And, you know, it works well with the neighbors, no complaints, so everybody puts the fence right in the right place. We'll just go with what we got for now.
So as an applicant, you're okay with the plan? You're okay with what you're presenting to us, and?
Yeah. Look through the comments one more time while you have a chance.
Yeah, might as well, it's, you know, you're the boss.
Yeah, we, you know, we're going to be granting an easement for the drainage, because right now, there's no drainage easement from Mass Road to this point. There has been a request for an easement along Mass Road, because the sidewalk got built about a foot or so. It makes sense, because otherwise, the town can't work on it. We're just discussing about how big that easement might be, so, you know, there's a few little main issues other than that, just some housekeeping issues.
At number ten, swing gates or doors?
Yeah, that was a suggestion. We hadn't planned on doing that. He took it as a suggestion, but...
Okay. That kind of wraps it up for us. And you, good. All right, well, thank you very much for your presentation. All right. Let's see, any public comment? Is there anybody else from the, from the public that would like to speak on this issue? Certainly. No? None? No brave souls out there that want to speak on this? Okay, then the public comment section will be, is finished. Any motions? Any, we'd like to...
I'll try for a motion.
Try something, Richard, thank you.
You guys need to listen carefully, in case I miss something or add too much along here. Okay. I move that we approve the lot line adjustment plan, subject to the following conditions of approval. I am going to list conditions one through eight. They're part of paragraph four.
So are we striking nine and ten?
Yes, sir. And let's just start with that motion, and is it okay with you, Mr. Chairman, if we do paragraph four first, and then we go on to paragraph five?
It certainly is, absolutely.
So we're going to take them in discreet chunks?
One at a time, okay? That would be good.
Okay. So my motion is to approve the lot line adjustment plan, subject to conditions one through eight.
We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Phil, seconds.
I have no discussion on my motion.
No discussion? Phil, you want to speak on your motion? Okay. Kind of cut and dry there. Let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. All abstentions, say abstain. How are you voting, Phil?
I voted aye.
Oh, you did vote aye. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Everybody else heard me.
But I kept going.
Five-zero.
Great, they're five-zero. Good.
I was looking to see how you were voting.
You know how I'm voting.
I was going to see if you were going to come out with a new type of vote, you know, fourth type thing.
You bet.
No, abstain or something else.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant a conditional use permit to waive the onsite parking requirements and allow for only sixty-one stalls, where ninety-one are required, and finding the following section, fourteen dot four dot one, subject to the conditional use permit provisions A through F, as printed in the staff recommendations.
Okay, motion on the table by Richard Meany, seconded by Phil Duvanta.
I have nothing to say about my motion.
Nothing to say, nothing to say. Take a vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, abstain, five-zero. Here's the vote.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the site plan, subject to the following conditions of approval, again referencing the staff recommendations, one through seven, eliminate number eight, change number nine to read, add more bollards around the deck to ensure no greater than seven and a half feet between bollards, and include number ten.
Second.
Motion on the table, Simone by Richard, seconded by Simone.
If I can, if I can add a, number nine, I guess parenthetically, what I could have added was, it's going to say add more bollards around the deck to ensure no more than seven and a half feet between bollards. In other words, I'm striking to the satisfaction of the fire department and replacing it with specific language.
Is that a change of your first motion?
No.
No?
It's just a clarification.
Clarification. Okay, so Simone's second, will stand. Anyone who wants to speak on that? Richard, you're all set, Simone, all set. Want to take a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays, abstentions, yeas have it, five-zero.
Thank you very much. Put more to that deck this summer.
Yeah.
Oh, no, that wasn't...
Right, we're hungry.
My gosh.
That's right.
You also say eleven through twenty.
I did. Want to cover that?
My ties at North Garden.
Because he mentioned that he was addressing that stuff, and...
Thank you.
Well, if I thought if I made a motion that he addresses it, it's something he's already done.
Wait a minute, we didn't do eleven through twenty.
Yeah, we're talking about that right now.
Yeah. I would say leave them in, just so that Megan can double-check that that's what's occurred.
Because the recommendation is to address the comments with, and I'm, I don't speak engineer, so I guess I can make the motion that the applicant address or...
Can we recommend that they address them to her satisfaction? I mean, that's, that's kind of, you know, she makes a comment...
That's going to be my suggestion.
She makes, she makes a comment and, you know, needs some, needs some type of addressing of that comment, but doesn't always end up being specifically a do this, 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 but as long as it meets to her satisfaction, then, I mean, that's...
Would you feel okay with that kind of recommendation? Okay. All right, and I'll make the final motion that the, the conditions listed in eleven through, I guess they're eleven through twenty, are addressed to the satisfaction of the town engineer.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion for Richard, and it's seconded by Phil. Any questions? Want to speak on the motions?
No, sir.
Okay. Take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays, abstentions, yeas have it, five-zero. We all set?
I got another one.
Are you going to get your...
I got another plan.
Got a plan? Great.
Two for one tonight.
Okay. Frank, it was my... Excuse me. Map thirteen, lots two A dash one and two B, completeness review, final subdivision review, hearing for a proposal to adjustment, to adjust the lot lines between the two existing lots, and then subdivide one more additional lot, creating a total of three lots. Steven Drewan, owner eighty-eight Violet Street and Wilken Street, Zoned Residential Two. Brian, would you give us a summary on this one, please?
Yes. This is pretty much, pretty, a pretty easy application in my mind to review. There was not a whole lot to, to have to check on regulations, or, I mean, it's typical for a lot line adjustment, you don't have to really do much with that.
Just mine and yours.
It's okay? So the one thing that this application did need is a waiver for the drainage study on the, on the application list. In talking with Megan, we made a determination that that wasn't required in this case, because it's just a small project, and typically for that, you would, you know, if you were doing streets and that type of thing, then, you know, it might be more of a concern, but especially in the case where they're actually going to be removing a big portion of driveway, and that's part of the reasoning for asking for the waiver, which is impervious. You know, they're going to, they are going to have some additional building square footage on these lots, because, you know, there will be two additional building lots created from this. But with removing the driveway, you sort of even out the amount of impervious surface and the need for additional drainage. So we didn't feel like a drainage study was necessary in this case, especially because, I mean, that's a costly thing to have to go through for such a small project, so we recommend that the board waive that requirement on the application. Other considerations, there was no need for any variance or special exception. There was a comment from the fire department just stating that for future, when they do, when they go to do addressing on these properties, there'll have to be some cooperation between Bedford and Manchester, because this is pretty much right on the corner of where all three towns meet, so, you know, this Violet Street and Wilken Street, they're both very, very close to the Manchester and Bedford lines, so that's just a consideration. And then also, for future, when building permits are issued, possibly building separation could be an issue, depending on if they are adding, you know, sheds close to the property line or something that might be too close to another structure, based on their fire codes and stuff like that, so, but that's something to look at in the future, I think. We did hold a TRC, it was just kind of a mini TRC with Megan and myself on this, and that was on February twelfth, twenty thirteen, with Mr. Shea here. And just for that waiver of the drainage study, number nine just says, any waiver from the development regulations requires a finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations, or be specific circumstances relative to the site plan, or conditions of the land in such site plan indicate that the waiver will be, will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations. So if you're going to make that waiver, do it with those two findings. And then the remaining recommendations are to accept the project as ready for review. I already went over the waiver, so I'll skip that one, and then, also define that it won't have a regional impact, I'm number one, and then accept it as ready for review after doing the waiver, and then approve the lot line adjustment and subdivision plan, subject to conditions one through seven. And I did not receive any, actually, so one through six, because I did not receive any additional comments from engineering department. So that's it. I'll turn it back to the chair.
Thank you, Brian. Very nice.
Have a question.
Yes, Phil, question?
Thank you. You mentioned that you did not get any comments back, or outstanding comments, from the engineering department? Did you get something back saying that there were no, they were complete, or did you just, is it, you're saying that because there was no response?
Well, I had spoken to Megan, she was out of town, and she didn't feel like there was anything necessary to comment on for this one.
Okay.
So I didn't get any email, but I spoke to her on the phone.
No, no, that's fine.
Great. Comment, Richard?
I'd like to make a motion if you're willing to accept it.
I will take a motion, sir.
I move that we find that this lot line adjustment subdivision plan will not pose a regional impact, that we waive some middle checklist items, as mentioned in A and B in the staff recommendations, that we accept this lot line adjustment plan subdivision plan as complete and ready for review.
Can I, can I just offer a clarification on that? The waiver is for a drainage study, and then the findings would be A and B as listed in the staff report.
Mended as such.
Jay, good motion by Richard, seconded by Phil. Any, want to speak to your motion, Phil? No? Take a vote. All in favor, say...
On the motion, though, you went through on the conditions precedent, one to six, because you eliminated...
you eliminated seven, right?
I didn't.
Oh, we, I'm just, I'm just through, I'm just through number three, because we have to hear the applicant and then do all that other stuff.
Do the public hearing.
Okay. But I will. Apologize. Yes.
Okay, vote on the motion. No more questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Nays, abstentions? Ayes have it, five zero. See. Any comment from?
Applicants.
The applicants? Any, yeah, the applicants?
I can give a little overview there. Raven Shea, senior survey. Starts as two pieces of property. I'll start with the property, the town lines. This is the Manchester-Gothstown town line, and it then turns into the Gothstown-Bedford town line, so it's very close, it's kind of in the southeast corner of the town. There's two pieces of property, there's a long, kind of odd-shaped parcel, twenty feet wide or so, that sits on the right-of-way, north right-of-way of Wilkins Street. Wilkins Street and Violet come off of Rockland, just to give you a little bit of idea. So, that's lot two B, I believe. And the second parcel is the remaining land, has an existing single-family residence that accesses out to Violet Street. The proposal is to take the long, narrow lot and attach this box from the larger lot to it, so the, it's still going to be odd-shaped, but it's going to be this strip along Wilkins and then a rectangle for the building area, and it's a twenty thousand square foot lot. Then the remaining lot with the existing residence will be subdivided to create a third lot, which backs up the lot, new lot two B. So, the existing lot, existing house will have a new driveway, paralleling where the old one was. The proposed lot on Violet Street will have their driveway coming in where the existing house is. This area of turnaround pavement will be removed to lessen the amount of impervious on the property, as, as Brian mentioned, and the lot two B will be accessed from Wilkins Street. All lots are serviced by municipal sewer. The existing house is presently serviced by a well, that will service lot two B, that fronts on Wilkins, and the two lots fronting up Violet will be serviced by municipal water. So, they'll all be municipal sewer service, and one will have a well, the rest will be water.
Great.
We are showing, we're showing possible house locations, just because the lots are a little odd-shaped, and we're showing a thirty-five by fifty, fifty-five foot square, which is a big, it's a big footprint, it's like almost two thousand square feet, you can easily fit a two-car garage and a thousand square foot footprint house within this box, just to show that there's, there's plenty of land to construct a reasonable-sized house.
Great, any questions for the applicant? Uh, is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this?
I'm the owner of record and have a driveway permit.
Uh, what's your name, sir?
Steven Druin.
Steve Druin, thank you.
I went through Bedford, I know that the fire department was concerned about addressing, but Bedford has no interest in this whatsoever, they actually, I submitted a letter, they only, only could do a driveway permit on that, so just, it'll be all through Gothstown, I believe.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions for any of the applicants? Any motions?
I think you opened the public hearing.
Oh, I should close the public hearing first.
I think so.
Yeah, let's close the public hearing, have the comments. Now, do we have any motions?
Yes.
Richard.
I'd like to move that we approve this lot line adjustment subdivision plan, subject to conditions precedent one through six in the staff recommendations.
I have a motion on the table from Richard.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Phil. Want to speak to your motion or further comment? Phil to speak on it, no?
No.
Okay. Let's take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, aye, and no, nays, abstentions, five zero.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Goodbye.
Last man standing.
Just like Bedford doesn't change their mind.
Okay, let's see.
See you next.
More new business, map eighteen lot sixty dash one. Completeness review, final subdivision and site plan review hearing for a proposed two-lot subdivision and proposal to build a seven thousand three hundred and eighty-one square foot retail building on the newly created lot sixty dash one, for an auto-pot store, auto-zone. The property is owned by L E E D Development LLC and is located on Mast Road and Abington Way, Zone Commercial, and this has also been continued from February fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen meeting. Brian, how about a summary on this one?
Okay. So, this project also was presented last meeting, however, was not accepted formally as a, an application ready for review. So, the, the reason that that had been not accepted was due to the lack of building elevations, which as you hopefully saw in your package, we do have some building elevations now that can be reviewed. So, that would be my reasoning for recommending the acceptance...
Thank you.
Of the plan as ready, as complete and ready for review. And as you stated, this is for a seven thousand three hundred and eighty-one square foot retail building, for a proposed auto-zone retail store, and it's for the proposed new lot of sixty dash one, map, map eighteen lot sixty dash one. Currently, we have an existing map six, map eighteen lot sixty dash one, but we're, the proposal here is to split it and create a new lot that would be left as a, as an open pad area for, or open developable lot for a future business to relocate there. So, they've, they've, they've proposed a correct amount of parking spaces to meet our regulations, they've proposed thirty-eight spaces, they include two handicap spaces with that. The required amount is thirty-seven. They meet the off-street loading requirements. It's, it also meets the landscape requirements and design review requirements. Driveways are to be no wider than twenty-four feet per our ordinance, so one of the things that would be a consideration that the planning board should take as part of the approval of this site plan is that they would be essentially waiving that requirement, and the way it's written in our ordinance basically just says it's twenty-four feet or as otherwise approved by the planning board as part of a site plan that they approve. So, if the planning board's okay with having wider driveways than the twenty-four feet regulation, then that would be fine, and they wouldn't have to do anything in addition to that. The reason why they have proposed wider driveways is they've got large truck deliveries that would be delivering their goods to the store, and they did provide a truck-turning template radius drawing to us, which I'm sure he's probably got a copy of that somewhere here with him, I don't know, maybe not. I actually left my copy of it up in the, up in the file, too, but we did take a look at that, and they do need every bit of the width that they proposed for their driveways in order to keep those trucks out of the parking spots and not encroaching on, on those parking stalls. So, with that, I would recommend that the planning board approve the additional width on the driveways. Staff review comments were requested back on January twenty-ninth for the first review, and then also, we, we did go through another round of comments. Comments were given back on February eighth to the applicant. And the one remaining comment that the planning board, that the planning department had out of those comments was that I would like to see at least two faux windows on the, on the back side of the building where there is none, no, nothing on that facade. It's a pretty blank facade, so they did put faux windows on the three other sides, and I think to finish that out, it would be important to keep the four-sided architecture looking in the town. So, that's my one recommended condition of approval from the planning department. I do recommend approval of the, of the subdivision plan and the site plan, and I've listed conditions of approval. There were engineering department comments, and they didn't actually make it into my report because I didn't get them until a couple of days ago, so you do have an email on your table from Alex, actually, because Megan is out of town, and so Alex was covering for her, that goes through all those comments. See if I can find my copy of it, hopefully here. So, there were eight listed comments from Alex on that email, and I would like to add those as approval conditions to the site plan. I don't believe they had any comments on the subdivision plan, so rather than having nine conditions, the ninth condition on here is outstanding engineering department comments shall be considered conditions of approval. We would, we would go with the first eight, and then include the additional eight comments from Alex, from the engineering department, so there would be sixteen total comments, or conditions of approval as part of the site plan approval recommendation. With that, I, I do, I do recommend approval of this application, and I'll turn it back to the, to the chair.
Very nice, thank you, Brian. Richard.
Just a question, the faux window thing, this is the, if, if I understand, when you say the back of the building, that's the part of the building that faces toward Bedford?
Yep.
Is, um, does, the Rite Aid have that, too?
Yes.
Faux windows on all four sides?
Yes. I drove around it just to check.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, let's hear it from the applicant.
Do you want to accept the application as complete first, or?
Yes.
Do you want to accept the application as complete?
Sure. So, you want a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, let's have a motion.
Okay.
We do, we do have the elevations this time. We move to accept this application for two-lot subdivision and site plan as complete and ready for review. Second.
Okay, motion by Richard, seconded by Phil. Want to speak to your motions, no? Uh, let's have a vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Uh, nays, abstentions? Yays have it, five zero. Now, let's hear it from the applicant.
Hey, this is, this Jeff Cavan from T F Moran's office. This is a, kind of a continuation, this project came in, actually showed a number of buildings in here as a overall plan when it first came in and approved. Since then, Rite Aid was constructed in this location, the driveway inn is built with a signalized intersection. In addition, there's a right inn that comes back, and Neighbor Works built what's considered workforce housing, the townhouses across the back. On the other side of Mystic Brook, there are two apartment buildings under construction that were approved that are part of this project or overall plan. So, we have two retail lots remaining, or we have one retail lot right now left in this spot. What we're proposing to do is take the three point oh seven acres and subdivide it in two, leaving a one point three nine acre lot and one point six acre lot. The park that is in the front of the site will remain here as part of the covenants and whatnot that run with the land. The owners of the property here are responsible for taking care and maintaining that park, and in addition to that, the covenants outline responsibility for maintenance and upkeep of the roadway as well. So, that's the subdivision, does anybody have any specific questions to that? Okay. So, again, what you're looking at, it is being proposed to come in and construct an auto-zone building on the one point three nine acre lot. So, it's a, a building that is roughly a hundred and sixteen by sixty-five, one-story building. Auto-zone has a lot of specifications themselves, they do a concrete pad in front here, concrete sidewalk with integral concrete curbing, and then they do a rollover concrete curb on the outside and regular asphalt in the middle, the way this site orients, a lot of their projects, they'll come in, they'll back in off of streets and whatnot, they'll, they'll schedule their trucks to come in at odd hours. Most towns don't particularly like that because you're not supposed to maneuver in a public way. So, through discussions, we've added a gravel access here on the adjacent lot and created an easement document that this lot can come in and get redeveloped, but they will always allow for access for their trucks to come through the site one way or the other, it can get moved, but it'll allow the trucks to come in, and they will, we're guessing they're probably going to come in this way, load, and then leave the site and back to the signal. So, what you have out there right now, all this is already in, Rite Aid landscaped that, we're proposing to put white pines across the back here, you can see this landscaping was put in by Neighbor Works, so we're putting some white pines across there. In the front, you can see the park is landscaped and there were trees planted there, so we've left these as, as lower shrubs, building mounted, or building type of vegetation. In the back here, this is the wall we're talking about, we've added four crab-apple trees, flowering trees that we felt would break that wall as far as the mass of the wall itself. So, circulation is good, the parking exceeds the town slightly, and it meets what Auto-zone was looking for. As far as the elevations, they gave you a reduced set, but this, this is basically the, the architecture we came in when we showed the original and what it is. If you're looking at the building from Mast Road, this is what you would see through the park. These are glass windows here, this is the fake window, and you can see we've put like a little roof overhang or awning across the top of that, this is a peaked roof entryway that outlines the door. The rear of the store facing the workforce housing has some of those same window features and roof, this is the overhead door that they would load from, and a man door, and this is a side facing Rite Aid. And this is a side facing Rite Aid where we've added these windows and that. This is the wall that Brian was talking about. Autozone really did not feel or want to add additional windows. They felt this covered and placing those four trees in this area, they felt would break the mass of that so that the windows are not necessary. They don't need them inside the facility. It's strictly for aesthetics. And they thought this is as much as they wanted to offer up at the time. So this is a hardy plank type of siding, clapboard type siding. This is the color arrangement. The lower, there's a brick block type panel across the bottom. It's two and a half feet tall. And then this is a hardy plank that are the color schemes as shown with the architectural shingles on the peaked roof area in the front. So that is pretty much what we have. Like I said, from their standpoint, they come in and, you know, place these trees on the side, which, you know, will remain. It's not that they will come out in the future. And they thought that was enough that would break the mass of the building. So lighting is, the parking lot lighting is going to continue with the lighting that's out there. It's a decorative style light. And basically, they've had their light poles already here with the double light down this side. So they added a few of those poles down the back. The balance of it, we've added building mounted lights. And one of the conditions was that those building mounted lights be full cutoff lights and not floodlights style, which we have no problems with.
Are those building lights going to be that same style of those lights or different?
Yeah, they'll be different. We'll submit a cut sheet to you so you can see them before they go in. Just to make sure they're full cutoff. But your comments have gone to Autozone and the owner, neither had any issue with it. So I'll-
Great.
Answer any questions?
Okay. Yeah, Phil?
Yeah. Two questions. One on the color, the drawing that we have up there now. Will you show the trees?
Yep.
The four trees that, to the right side? The top tree, the location of the trees, the way they're shown on here? That top tree, the edge of that tree is very close to the edge of that pavement?
Yeah.
If you look at that, and then when you look at the trees, the, this edge of the trees to the building? When you're looking at the trees, the left of the trees, that space between the building?
Yeah.
I'm just questioning if that upper tree should come down a little bit just to make sure that it does not overhang into the roadway? Because you're talking about turning, the turning radiuses?
Yeah.
And if you do that, it would bring it a little bit closer to the building? And I'm just, I'm just, you know, I, I just-
No, I have no problem with doing that, saying that right now, the center of the tree is probably about 10 feet off that edge of pavement. But I agree with you, if we moved it 20 feet back, it would get in this location and be well away from that turning.
Just, just to bring that in because then that, that would also help to block it. And the other question I have-
Just re-center the rest of them, too, to-
Yeah.
It would break up the mass of the building even better.
Right now, there's space, there's space far enough that maybe not going to get overcrowded. So we could-
Squeeze them.
Leave that one, pull that one in and then space the-
Because if you look at the bottom tree, I, I think if you look the way the bottom tree is, bring the top tree in and then just readjust the trees?
Yep, that's no problem.
On that. And on C, the black and white?
Yeah.
Is it C or A? A2, I believe? Do you have that? I have this reduced copy?
Yep.
And the question that I have is on the top elevation. If you flip that all the way up, see underneath your creek, yeah, on your left side? What I, the reason why I'm asking, on mine, here's this black, and I don't know if it's a smudge or-
It must be.
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't some type of an ornament.
Yeah, I was thinking architectural design feature.
That's all. Okay. Okay. You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay.
There's no black.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe it was a horse's head or something, you know? A gargoyle of some sort.
Yeah.
A gargoyle.
No, that's okay.
And Brian had pointed out, we've added the windows on that, on this facade per the color up. The color up is correct and this is what we've committed to.
Is this a long, that's the one facing the housing?
No, this, this is-
That's the right side.
Facing the, the balanced property, which will be another commercial user. And that's why we felt, you know, it's like a tree there. Here it is there. We felt that would break the mass of the building.
Hopefully, there's another building that'll go up there at some point.
Yes.
That would be, yeah, that would be-
Unfaked lot.
Yeah.
Something. And then that side of that one that's facing you.
Okay. Yeah, that's all right. That's okay and we'll-
I like the, I like the trees, especially the way Phil suggested moving them as an alternative to breaking up the mass of the building as opposed to the faux windows. And it, it, using trees to do something like that sort of matches what was done on the, the entrance road. I forget the name of that entrance road.
Abingdon Way?
Is it Abingdon Way?
I believe so.
It's, it's right next to the, right next to the Hannaford. Because alongside that road are trees all along the right-hand side.
That one's Mystic, Mystic Brook?
Okay, yeah, Mystic.
And Hannaford did plant that, that set of-
Yeah, so I, it, I like that because it, it, having trees there is in the spirit of that, building the trees as screens. So I, I think that's sufficient to accomplish the purpose that you mentioned, Brian.
I always try to get the most possible nice-looking building. I always, I always think if you have some type of, even if there's a tree there, it looks nice. But I, you know, I agree. I think the trees do, do a fair, fair job at, at that. If there were no trees, I would definitely want to have something else there, but I'm okay.
This entrance into Hannaford, is this, or this proposed future access to, I assume that's Hannaford, is that?
No.
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 Okay. Where, where are you?
Uh, to the very right, right, right center of the green. Future center, yeah, future access into-
This is something, yeah, I mean, it, it would be to Hannaford. And I had done the design on the Hannaford, so I'm very familiar with it. There's always been talk as to whether or not-
The very beginning.
This could be connected.
Long time.
And, um, in fact, when we, when I came in with the Hannaford, you know, there was discussion to, you know, could we put the signal there? And, you know, at the time, there was no commitment. You had an individual landowner over here and you just couldn't get it to the point where it worked. And so it ended up where it was. So I mean, yeah, we have no problem with, you know, allowing, you know, an easement or what have you. I don't know that it'll work or happen great-wise or that Hannaford would have you come through there. They have a lot of, you know, grocery stores, carry pharmacy and a whole lot of things. And that's why they don't like to leave open ends because they don't want competition, you know, getting benefit going through their lot.
But then again, they may not be there forever.
That's right. So we have no problem with putting it there and if that sometime in the future works-
Good to leave open. Good to leave the option open. It certainly makes sense if we need it.
Because what happens if, let's say, 20 years down the road, what's currently the, the Hannaford property comes before here, us? Not us, but who's ever sitting here?
You'll still be here, Phil.
Phil, you'll be here. No one else will.
You've been here this long. Don't worry, you'll still be here.
But with that property, if that lot or whatever is that lot comes and if there is, is a point to try to make the connection, if you don't have that potential on here, there's no way to make an adjoining, a property owner give you, give that access. And what they're providing, they're providing that ability here so that down the road, if that ever comes up.
Right.
Uh, because we ran into that with the, with Dunkin' Donuts. Between the Dunk, I, I think you, you might remember that, between the Dunkin' Donuts and, and the, the gas station.
Gas station behind it.
On, on that stuff. That's why there was always that thing. And one came in, you couldn't do anything because, well, the other one's not here. This is the one that's in front of us, but not, we can't force them to make a change to their site plan.
So is that actually, is there an easement in place already for that? Or is it something that is just kind of a note of a possible easement or what is that?
Uh, there's a book and page on it.
Right.
Okay, so it's already in place?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Great. Yeah, we'll keep it there.
And I have to say, that's one of, one of the things that, when this first came, that was a request by the planning board for something along that. And it was different, it was tough because of elevation differences as you go further down.
Yeah.
But there, there is one.
And that's what, I know when Megan, the former planner, was-
Steve.
Laying this out, trying to encourage St. Anson College to move forward with, you know, pursuing development, you know, it came in from this direction. And again, it's really hard to, one, get Hannaford to buy into it unless they knew exactly what was happening. But then secondly, you, right now, you're driving through their parking lot. Which is hard to, you know, have any volume of traffic, you know, going through someone else's parking lot. But like you said, in the future, who knows what that could be?
You never know what they come to request of us.
Could possibly redevelop that parking lot a little bit and decrease the parking?
And decrease the traffic.
Add a building or something and make a road through there and connect out to, you know, at the-
That would decrease traffic, too, on Mass Road for that portion where maybe they'll be going between the Plaza and Hannaford and, and back there and leaving the road to, to drive.
Just says Hannaford doesn't want to go from-
I know.
Hannaford to a pharmacy over there.
I understand that, but it would be nice if-
No, no, I know, I just, at the, yeah.
You know, just someday, maybe, maybe it will all happen. But across, there's a little bridge down by Shaw's, too. We, you know, that little parking lot out there. Looks like a good access, too. So someday, who knows?
So we're fine with all the conditions that have been listed, other than, again, under the site plan, the seven? We're requesting not to be required to add any additional windows down that one wall.
Subject to the trees being relocated.
Great. Sounds, uh, sounds good. Is that, that's your presentation?
Yeah.
Great.
Sir, you saw the, the-
Yes.
Conditions, engineer, okay.
Thank you. Good. We'll, uh, close the, uh-
Um, excuse me, I'm sorry. I, I have one more thing that I needed to add. Sewer had sent an email. Do you have that in front of you, too?
Yes.
From Mike Yergo.
Yeah. And- One explanation of how it can be.
Yeah, I, I did want Kevin, Jeff, to adjust those comments quickly, if you could.
What, what we have out here is, it was kind of an odd setup when Neighbor Works went in. The owner put in, tapped into the new sewer line on our side of the road and actually came back through here. There's a sewer easement that runs through here that's in place. And there's two force mains in that sewer easement right now. One stops there. It was put in place to service these two lots. The other one came through and that's how Neighbor Works sewers its site, hit pumps with one of those force mains. When we looked at this, we proposed an option that would actually provide gravity sewer for both of these lots coming through here. But what it required was shallower cover as we went into that road, which means instead of having what the town, what most people would like would be six feet of cover over the top of the pipe, we only have two right there and it's four in other places. We've called for insulation to be wrapped around the pipe. It would prevent it from freezing. That's why you're looking for cover and so forth. We've been, we've provided, we've provided information to the sewer commission. We've been trying to get hold of Mike and get a reply. We didn't get one until this afternoon. But we have sewer. We have sewer one way, either way. But we're still working with them as to whether or not they would allow the gravity. If they don't allow the gravity, we use the force main that's sitting there. So as part of a condition of approval, we will, I think there is, in fact, there is a condition on there that, you know, we get the approval of the sewer commission. We've been before them once. We will continue to work with them until we get an agreement on either option. We've designed the gravity and the sewer if the force main is already in place, so.
Thank you. That's all. Any more questions? Okay, with that, we will-
I, I guess I do, but maybe I missed something. Talking about an email from Mike Yergo. There were four bullets that he had up here on the top and the bottom one, I'm not clear on. Was that, did I miss something?
No. It's odd to me, too, because again, I, we got it at the end of the day and we talked to Mike earlier. And it didn't sound like he was saying, no, you can't do the gravity. We talked about this material that we found that's being used up in Canada. Right below the gravels of the road base and use it as insulation material and support traffic and so forth. We thought, we felt, our understanding was we're still working on whether or not they wanted the gravity. Or if they didn't, we would go to the force main. Here, he made what I consider a clear statement, saying that it does not meet the sewer commission standard that we submitted, which is the gravity. And I'm just saying, then we will use the force main that's already in the ground out there.
So in other words, one way or the other?
We-
But anything that we approve here is going to be subject to sewer commission approval anyway.
That's correct.
So we're not doing that, okay? All right.
And the others, you know, existing sewer. The oddity with, odd thing with this, I think I mentioned before. Autozone goes out to bid national firm. They hired Holden to do the base map instead of firing us. So they're providing us with a base map. And so when there's like a couple of his comments are labeling things on the existing conditions, existing sewer and Mass Road and one that's abandoned, we just have to go back to Holden and get them to add that to our plan. But it's easily done. Just more complicated than me adding on-
Right.
Existing or abandoned on my plan.
Good thing you didn't have a lot of changes to make. I'm costing them more money. That's what happens when you take a little bit sometimes.
I'm not going to comment.
No, 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 I'm not. Yeah, I'm, I'm just making a point. That's all. I've been there, done that.
Okay. Uh, with that, let's, uh, close the-
You have to open it first.
You have to open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing. Well, that was the presentation. Let's open the public hearing. Nobody's here to speak, so we'll close the public hearing. And, uh-
I'll go stay out there in the public if you want me.
Go ahead. Grab some coffee while you're out there. So that will close the public hearing and, uh, do we have any motions that we'd like to?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the subdivision plan with the conditions one through seven as recommended by the town planner.
Motion by Richard. Phil, seconds.
No comments.
No comments, no comments.
Uh, the only thing that we might want to add in there is the relocation of the trees.
Is that the subdivision plan or the site plan, Phil?
Site plan.
So that'll be the next motion.
I'm always one step ahead of myself.
Also, I believe number seven-
That's why you've been selectman forever.
Number seven could be deleted just because there were no comment, additional comments on this subdivision plan.
So amended.
Second. Second.
Okay, we're all set.
Sounds good.
Let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions, five zero.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan with conditions one through six as listed by the town planner. And hopefully, Gail, you can wordsmith me to make me sound really wise when I say, instead of number seven as listed by the town planner, that we have the applicant have four crab apple trees on the, lack of a better word, right side, east side, but this is sort of a, whatever the correct angle is on that, southeast side.
Which elevation? Is it on here, hang on a second? It's the east side.
East, east side, four crab apple trees on the, on the east side of the building. And then include number eight. And then nine through 16 will be the comments from the assistant town engineer.
Motion by Richard on the table, and he's second. Phil, seconds.
We just clarify that those four crab apple trees, since they're already on the plan, would be shifting to the south?
Yeah, would all be aligned with the building as opposed to outside of the...
In other words, the way your motion reads, the existing crab apple trees as shown on the plan to be realigned.
Something along those lines.
Do we really need that in writing?
Yes.
Four, within the limits?
No, they have four on the plan.
Yeah, but we don't refer to every other plant or tree that's planned.
There's a reason because we took that other requirement out and we wanted...
So you want to move all four trees within the lines of the building?
Well, we're basically, you're basically moving three trees. You're leaving the bottom one where it is, you're bringing the top one down to match the bottom of the building. And it's all being done because of the radius, the turning radius, because of the size trucks, tractor trailers that they have coming in so that the way it's shown on the plan right now, it's very, the edge of the tree is very close to that, in that turning radius so that it doesn't interfere with that, bring it down into the building. And we're doing that in, in place of requiring additional windows. That's all.
Applicants okay with that?
Yeah, just a simple adjustment of what they're putting in anyway.
Yeah, I understand. Simple adjustment, we can add that in there as part of the condition. All set with that, want to take a vote?
No further discussion.
No further discussion, great, let's take a vote on that, that motion. Aye.
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 Any nays, any extensions, five zero.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you very much too. Is there any other business? I don't see any other business, I think we've completed... Motion to adjourn by Phil. Brian, anything else, we're all set?
This correspondence, we have to... I was just going to mention...
All right, withdraw my motion then.
No, not withdraw, my second.
If the second's there, I can't withdraw.
There you go. Yeah, there, I just wanted to mention, we got a, an email from Southern Hampshire Planning Commission just about some upcoming vision workshops for their Granite State Futures project that they're working on. Granite State Futures project is like a statewide effort to create regional comprehensive plans for every region in the state.
Including CN, CNG and LNG fueling stations?
Well, I don't know. It's not, that's, that's part of the energy plan, right?
Yeah, it's not included in the energy plan, but it should be.
This is simply an invitation, right?
If you want, yeah, if you want to go and talk about those fueling stations at the visioning workshop...
I'm just saying, they're being built in Nashville.
It would be, it would be part of that.
And Cummins has an, it's experimental motor that's been experimental for one year. It's coming out in April, they're putting in a limited number of them out through August to make sure that all the, all the, it does run on natural gas. They're putting out, it's coming out in production around April 16th. Through August, they're selling it and they're going to, they're, it's a test run that's offered to the public, you know, that's being sold to make sure all the manufacturing bugs are out before they go into full production on it. So it's here.
We're the future, it's here.
And I'll just note that I don't think we're endorsing this, this is just simply an invitation or announcement because there are some communities that rejected some of the Granite State Future plans and are unsatisfied with some of the recommendations, so this is not endorsement of this.
Right, it's just an invitation to come out to their public workshops and be part of the visioning process.
Right.
So you've got the dates there of the meetings and I'm not going to go past that.
Are there speakers that may be able to attend our meeting that could give us both perspectives of...
On this?
On this, both, both sides of it, Granite State Futures and Granite State...
Property rights organization perhaps?
And property rights organizations. Are there different organizations that can enlighten us and the viewing public as to that there are definitely two and, and more opinions? Do you know of any or I guess it would be best to, well, perhaps to invite them?
I mean, Southern Hampshire Planning Commission obviously would be in charge of this whole project for the, for this region. So I mean, if you wanted information about that, you know, you'd talk to those guys.
Okay, well, we'll plan out work on that next year and see if we can...
You could invite them to come and do a presentation with the planning board to discuss what, what they're talking about at their, you know, meetings and stuff like that, just to get an update.
That'd be wonderful, we'd like to know what they're talking about. Plan Pernodville, keep looking out for that. No other new, old business, new business, no business, okay. Any motion to adjourn?
It was already made and seconded.
Made and seconded.
Third.
Okay, we are open for business, so tell everybody out there, bring your plans to the planning board, we want to hear them.
Nice job tonight, John, Mr. Chairman.
With no objection, we are...
Supposed to be a vote, right?
Yeah, let's take a vote, yays.
Oh, yeah.
Yay, nays, extensions. Good, thanks everybody for coming.